I'd like to call the Planning Commission to order for Chesterfield on February 18th, 2025. Would you please silence your phones if you have them, the ringers on, and would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to this evening to temporarily elect Carl Leonard as our Chairperson this evening.
We have a motion to appoint Carl Leonard as temporary Chair for tonight. Motion made by Rick LaBelle, supported by Ralph Jaworski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? All right. Roll call. We have Rick LaBelle.
Here.
Kathy Bosberg. Mark Renaud, he's excused. Jim Klonowski.
Here.
Ralph Jaworski.
Here.
Brian Carr.
Here.
Richard Brokert.
Here.
Eric Hyder.
Here.
And Carl Leonard here. I would like to do approval of the minutes. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for February 4th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. And let's see here, so we're going to do approval of the agenda. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Leonard, seconded by Rich Brokert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do have public comments for three minutes for agenda or non-agenda items. If anybody from the public would like to come up for three minutes and talk about anything, please do. All right. There are no public hearings tonight, and we have our regular agenda items. And if Secretary LaBelle would be those for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A is Morelli Lot 5 Site Plan 2024-24. It's zoned M1, it's 2.19 acres, southeast corner of Chesterfield Road and Morelli Drive. The parcel ID is 15-09-17-301-005. The address is 27056 Morelli Drive. We postponed making a decision, giving the applicant an opportunity to make adjustments to the drawings, and that was postponed from 2/4 to 2025. If anybody has any questions about anything regarding this this evening?
I can address some, in the last meeting, there were some issues. I think I've corrected all five of those. Two of the main ones were, A, was a berm across the front of the Chesterfield Road there, and we did widen it to 32 feet and made it five foot high. Another big concern was a dumpster area. We moved that from the front of the building along Chesterfield Road to the north side along Morelli Drive, that's off the main road. We've got, we had the irrigation note on the landscape plan. We removed any contradicting notes about painted materials, so it's now just stained, and also removed the three light holes in the lighting plan. And we will make sure in the building we have cutoff lights that shine down.
Thank you.
One, one quick question for you. Can you confirm that there are full cutoff lights on the building and that those are in place?
We can make that part of the approval tonight if you want, whatever has to be done, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding Morelli Lot 5 Site Plan 2024-24, zoned M1, located on the corner of Chesterfield Road and Morelli Drive. Parcel number 150917301005 with address of 27056 Morelli Drive. I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request. This approval is based upon the changes made to the site plan dated 2/6/25. That was the revision we asked for, and the confirmation email letter sent on 2/10/25. All requests made by this commission have been addressed adequately, and for these reasons, I submit this motion to approve.
We, we have a motion by Mr. Brokert, supported by Mr. Klonowski. All in favor?
Aye.
You didn't ask for discussion, I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If the motion was made. Did you want to add the light, the lighting to the motion?
Sure.
Yeah, that's actually a really good idea, Ms. Bosberg, thank you. In the motion, I'd like to include that full cutoff lights on the building will be in place for this approval to, to go forward.
Okay, the motion has been amended, and we have continued support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B is Motor City Stamping Site Plan 2024-22. It's zoned M2, it's 16.61 acres, west side of Grashit Avenue, north of 21 Mile Road. The parcel ID is 15-09-30-302-026. Their address is 47783 Grashit Avenue. Just one note, I'd like, the applicant is, is here this evening, if one of the applicants would please come to the podium. This, this addition to the building came in front of ZBA six months ago, four to six months ago.
Yes.
And with a request of banking parking spots for this addition. And you'll note on the drawing that there is items outlined on the drawing for additional parking if necessary. That, you might want to open it up for questions.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, or?
No, nothing to add, however, I would like just a brief summary of, you know, this project and why we're doing this. We are a stamping manufacturer, so therefore we have a lot of stamping dies. As the business grew over the years, we have accumulated a good inventory of stamping dies, some of which are currently being stored outside. We have been requested by our customer to store the dies inside in order to keep them from the weather. So also, as the business grew, we are basically consuming more steel raw material, which also, part of it is being stored outside. So we are proposing this expansion in, onto our existing building as a storage facility for the stamping dies and steel coils. This is the nature of the project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the board? We'll start down with Mr. Carr.
My questions are just associated with, with vehicular traffic within the site. Because, you know, the site's pretty constrained, and this will further constrain it. So, and my question is, it looks like originally everything was one-way traffic, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you would try to keep people, you know, so they can go in a circle, which, which again, I think is, is good. Now it looks like you're proposing to make one-way traffic, two-way traffic, and I'm assuming where those arrows are, you're going to paint arrows on the ground, I'm thinking? Is that what your plan is? Or are those arrows just kind of showing for us?
They're just indicators on the drawing.
Okay, so my, my question comes down to, in my experience, when you have two-way traffic, there's a minimum of 24 feet. That's required for two-way traffic, in particular, especially with semi-trailers coming in and out of there. In several of these areas, there's pinch points to where it's, you know, less than 24 feet. What is your plans for that?
Our semi-trucks, our larger trucks, they only go in one way and out the other way, so there would be no two-way truck traffic. I think the two-way is purely for our employees with much smaller vehicle. We have operated this way currently, and there has been no congestion. And with the additional space, the, the expansion we're proposing, it is purely a, for storage purposes. So there will be no additional employees or traffic as compared to our current state.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I, I can appreciate what you're trying to do. I mean, I, your businesses are probably expanding, which is a good thing, so it just, you know, from, because you're mixing, in my experience, working in the automotive industry, typically you separate, you know, POVs from truck traffic, right? But your site's very constrained, so you've intermixed them all, which I understand you have a site constraint, but anytime you mix personal employees with truck traffic, and you're asking them to use the same spaces and you're constraining those spaces, it's, it's, you know, it's going to create a potential issue. And again, that's, I'm just sharing with you, that's, you know, one of my hesitations is just, is just that. I mean, not that I don't, you know, again, you're coming, you know, you're coming here, I was just, it's a concern.
I understand your concern.
Yeah, that's, that's all, because we have to look at it from a site plan approval perspective, and that is, you know, definitely a concern of mine, is, is mixing those two and then making pinch points and constraints within your traffic flow. You know, where some spots it's greater than 24, other spots it's less, and so you're creating pinch points for now cars and vehicles, and cars and trucks to try to, you know, maneuver, and that's all. So I, that part just makes me a little apprehensive, and the, the only other thing I had was then just making sure we reinforced the, or are we reinforcing the no paint in regards to their, I'm sure they already got a bunch of things painted within their footprint, but I just didn't know how far we wanted to reinforce that. I couldn't see the entire set of plans because documents you sent, I don't know if either have the same, but it keeps crashing after like page six for me, so I couldn't see anything past page six, but, you know, so I couldn't really see your elevations, is kind of my point. I just want to make sure that, again, that the materials are appropriate and, you know.
We, we did indicate color-pregnated blocks, so it will match the color of our existing building. We don't have to use paint.
So the block is like a tinted CMU block, and then it's a ribbed, like, metal panel, insulated metal panel?
Yes, that's, that's correct, yes.
Nothing's considered painted on here. There's no, as far as the CMU and the sheet metal, there's, that's not in the case.
Yeah, and then your, the, your overhead doors are going to be pre-finished for the manufacturer?
That's correct, yes. And the color is matching of the existing building.
Yeah, now I remember, I remember, I think you came a few years ago for the other edition, right? That you do, recently do another edition, kind of fill the buildings in or something?
Yes, a few years ago.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I remember that as well, so, okay, understood, thank you, I'm good.
Mr. Brokert?
No questions.
Mr. Boss? Bosberg, sorry. Mr. Hyder?
Now, with the proposed addition itself, what's going to be stored in there? Is it just deliveries, or is it actually the integration of the existing shop in there?
What stores in this proposed expansion will be stamping dies?
Now, is that hazardous?
No, no, no.
The dies themselves?
No, they are just steel dies.
Just the steel dies?
Yes, and then also some steel coils.
Thank you.
Mr. Jaworski? Hey, I'm a big fan of moving it indoors, probably make the site look a little nicer, so I'm good, thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. LaBelle?
Back to Mr. Carr's question. Would it behoove the motion to include a truck traffic only sign for that lane of traffic? Or even some writing on the, on the concrete, truck traffic only, keep the cars out of there? Would that satisfy your concern?
Well, I just think it needs to be addressed somewhere, because I came from stamping, you know, I'm very familiar with the stamping process, I worked at Chrysler. Started out my career in the stamping plant, at Warren's stamping, so I'm very familiar with it. And again, in my experience, you know, you, you always separate POVs from truck traffic, because it just creates hazards. And so, what, again, what was my, I know you have a site constraint, and I'm not trying to make it harder, but I am trying to prevent future issues. I mean, just because there hasn't been an issue today, you are, you are changing your site, you're changing the traffic flow within your site, and from a one-way circular pattern to now two-way traffic all around, which does create, again, more opportunities for potential issues, right? And so, yeah, I would say, I mean, some type of signage would be, to me, is recommended. That's why I thought maybe you were going to paint arrows on the floor, you know, because we did that in automotive lot, put arrows, directional arrows, so, you know, vehicles knew which trap, you know, and then even if it's putting, you know, where there's pinch points to where like a corner of a building's coming in and approaching on that 24 feet, I mean, it's just highlighting that area, right? Like making sure that that, the building doesn't get hit, right? And so whether that's adding a bollard to that corner to prevent, you know, vehicles from hitting the building or something, to me, it's, it's, those are things that improve the safety on your site, and it, you know, from a safety perspective, that's just the kind of stuff I look at.
Understood. Would, would it be helpful if we continue with a one-way traffic? And we will, instead of two-way, as you see here, we'll make this one-way, one-way in, one-way out?
Well, I mean, the one-way does help, I mean, obviously, once you start doing, you can do what you want, obviously, I'm not going to know one way or another. I'm not that stupid, I've been around, so, you know, I just, but from a plan perspective, yeah, I mean, I, I think that helps with your traffic flow, because it eliminates, it eliminates the congestion possibility and pinch points to where, you know, you got a truck coming this way, you got a POV coming this way, and they, you know, and now they're trying to squeeze between a 22-foot space, they had a corner of a building, and, you know, just, it creates, you're eliminating pinch points and potential vehicular issues, right? And then, I'm assuming too, because you got separate buildings, I mean, again, been on these sites many times, you know, people walk from building to building, now you got two-way traffic, people walking building to building, especially in the summer months, it, you're just, you're, you're mixing the, the wrong things together, that's just my thing, and for future liabilities, to me, it would, it might be better for you, but, I mean, that would be.
We can make that happen. I think, you know, point well taken, and then, actually, we mostly do a one-way, but we can make it official and we'll enforce it.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my recommendation, so.
Just a question, your one-way, is this going to be a clockwise or a counterclockwise rotation?
This will be a counterclockwise.
Counterclockwise, that's what I thought.
Yes.
The chair just wants to make a comment, that I've been around the ZBA and the Planning Commission for quite a while, and I've seen Motor City come up here numerous times over the years, and never had any bad things trailing, all the expansions you've done, you've been a good resident of the township, created a lot of jobs, and so I think you're on that same path, willing to, you know, make things work, and we're glad to try to help out if we can, help you grow a little bit more, so.
Thank you very much.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. The motion is pending official truck traffic only signage or one-way signage, your decision to address Mr. Carr's concern about safety in the vehicle routing. I'd like to make a motion regarding Motor City Stamping Building Expansion Site Plan 2024-22, 16.61 acres west of Grashit, north of 21 Mile Road. Parcel ID 150930302026, address 47783 Grashit. After review of the site plan, the tree survey, landscape plan, and related ordinances, this proposal meets all zoning ordinances and their standards and their intent. As a result, I move to approve the applicant's request for expansion of their building.
We have a motion by Mr. Brokert looking for support. We have support from Mr. Carr, so we have a motion by Mr. Brokert, support by Mr. Carr, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Good luck, guys.
Motion passes.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Item C is Camden Estates Site Plan 2024-25. It's zoned R1-B. There was a consent judgment on the property, there is a consent judgment on the property. It's 52, 52.3 acres. It's the north side of 21 Mile, 25 Mile Road, east of Grashit, Grashit Avenue. The parcel ID is 15-09-03-300-005. The applicant is here this evening, if they would come to the podium, there, I'm sure there's going to be some questions. If you could just give us a quick description, a just.
Sure. Good evening, Mr.
Description of what's going on here this evening?
I will, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tom Callis, I'm here representing the applicant. The applicant is also here this evening, along with our engineer, should you have any questions beyond my expertise. We are here seeking to amend, my address is 31350 Telegraph Road, and that's at Bingham Farms, Michigan. So we're here seeking to amend a consent judgment that was actually entered back in July of 2003. So it's 22 years since that judgment, and that provided for R1B 75 by 130 size lots. Obviously, the property's still vacant, which in our opinion indicates, you know, what the market looks at, and, you know, no demand, you know, and, and, you know, it's just, we feel the lots are too big, especially in today's marketplace, with interest rates, cost of materials, you know, there's, there's, you know, no one wants big lots anymore, the 90-foot lots, the 80-foot lots, they're just not marketable. You know, I represent a lot of builders, a lot of developers, I've been doing this for a long time, and I have so many clients that are looking for lots. They want single-family lots, there's just no inventory, but they want them in the 60-foot range, 55-foot range. People today, you know, they don't want the big lot anymore, they want the smaller lot, and still you can put up a nice home for retirees, empty nesters, newly married couples, people just starting out. There's such a demand for that product, and it's just not out there. So this is a, a development that we've taken a lot of time, we've gone back and forth from our initial proposal with Mr. Palin that we've been working on, and what you have now is, or actually, you can see it on the screen, and you probably have it in front of you, is our proposed layout as we seek to amend this consent judgment. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at it or not, we do have a colored one also, I don't know, John, you don't have it? Just so you can see some of the graphic with respect to, you know, the green belts and the landscaping, the site will have two detention ponds on there. There is a wide DTE easement, 165 foot wide, that cuts across, cuts across the property in a horizontal manner. There's also the fish drain, which is a county drain under their jurisdiction, but all those amenities, you'll see, the DTE easement provides for a recreation area. The drain will be a nice aesthetic addition to the development. We're also proposing two detention ponds with walking paths, a clubhouse with a workout area for the residents. You can see on the, on the site plan that obviously contains a lot of what we're proposing. So in, and the lots will be 60 by 120, we propose a total of 179 lots. 166 of them will be that 60 by 120 size, and 13 lots that are on the front of the site plan, south of the drain, will be 75 by 130. So they'll be larger lots, but they're around the detention area, so obviously, you know, they, they have nice views and all that. So this is an area, utilities are available, we're looking to come out there and jumpstart, you know, some residential development. We feel this is a product that is marketable, it's in demand, we're going to build houses on, on the lots. The houses will average anywhere from 1,300, I thought I saw, there we go, will average. Will average anywhere from 1,300 to 1,800 square feet. It'll be a nice product. We did submit floor plans and colored elevations of the product. They'll have two-car attached garage, front-facing garages, basement, porch area. And they'll range anywhere from two to three bedrooms, kitchen, family room. You know, depending on, on, on the market, the product obviously will be market-driven. You know, it's our goal to bring the smaller, you know, ranch-style product in, somewhere in the low 300 to 300 range. And obviously, the colonial and split levels, the larger ones that approach the 1,800 square foot will be a little more pricier. But still, hoping to keep everything under the $400,000 range, which quite frankly, there's nothing out there. If you look around, there's no product out there, there's no development out there in that price range, but there's such a demand for it. So, in our proposal, we're seeking your recommendation to allow us to proceed with amending the consent judgment. And obviously, we'll work with your planner and Mr. Seabert on that document to allow for this development. We do understand that this is a recommending body. We still need to go to the Township Board to get the actual approval. And if we get that approval, then we'll work on amending the consent judgment. What you see in front of you is what you're going to get. We know that we still have to come in and go through your formal site plan review process and your engineering process. So, you know, issues, you know, that come up with respect to the site, development. Obviously, we have the County Public Works Office involved, Road Commission, you know, those will all be dealt with at the site plan and engineering stage. But we feel this is a nice development, a nice product, a nice layout for the area and something that is clearly in demand today. And we're hoping that you look at it favorably and make a favorable recommendation. And to, again, to the extent you have any questions, we're here to answer them, to make you comfortable. We want a product that you're comfortable with, that the township's comfortable with, and one that we feel, you know, obviously, that the market needs and there's a demand for. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're going to bring it to the board, and I'll start down on this end this time with Ms. Vosper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just a couple of questions regarding the, the DTE easement. You said that, that it's open for recreation?
Yes, we propose a recreation area. DT typically will give you the consent to do that, you know, obviously, there are overhead wires. As long as you're not interfering with their ability to get, in case after, ever have to do any repairs or, or anything like that, so, or put trucks in there.
Yeah, and I've seen other neighborhoods where people are, they, you know, play frisbee or whatever it is that they're doing out there. And I always think, to me, I think it's a good use of a public type of property. As long, you know, other people consider other safety and health things, but at least it's available to the people. Then the second one is regarding, oh, actually, back to that one. That's considered a path, a walking pathway to?
Walking, walking paths, I believe, are along the detention pond areas. But you can also include walking paths in that easement.
Are you, is that going to be considered open to the public to come in if they came in off a sidewalk or whatever, to walk through there?
Well, it's, it's, it's going to be part of the actual development, so it's not open to the general public. It's not a public park, obviously, but...
It's not going to be a major hookup with a sign welcoming. That's fine. I just want...
It's for, it's for the benefit of the residents.
For the residents.
As is the clubhouse and walking pass. You'll see there's park benches along the, you know, the river there on the walking pass by the detention area. So, it's, it's, you know, we have a berm along 25 Mile landscaping. So, it's, it's a very nice, you know, we feel at least, it's a very nice product, very nice development.
Sure. And one other thing, the Fish Creek, what does it currently look like? Is it full of fragmity or has it been cleaned out by the Public Works? Do you know?
I don't, I don't...
The creek, is it, do you maintain it?
Yeah, the county.
So, whatever they've done.
Yeah, whatever they've done.
Do you know if they're, have you been working with them yet, getting preliminary ideas? Are they, are they going to require you do additional clean out?
They may. We haven't, you know, until we know that, we're, we have the green light here, or, you know.
Right.
Once we know we have the green light, then we're going to engage with everyone and whatever we have to do. But we have room there. If we have to clean it out, if we have to expand it, we've got, you know, room to do that, so.
Okay. So, thank you. I, it looks like it has potential for being a nice site. And I, I have, I have interest in the waterways especially. So, I look forward to seeing that. The more it's cleaned out, the more desirable it is for people purchasing too, so, thank you.
Yeah, and our bigger lots, as you see, are towards the front there. So, you know, there's every incentive to, you know, clean it out, make sure it's nice and all that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Heider?
Jonathan, this one goes to you first. They're asking for the, a front yard setback of 25 feet. But on, on a review, it says that the impact of a front yard of 45 feet on a front yard setback. Is there a difference between what is proposed and what the, the review is? And asking for a possible variance on the entire front yard setback issue?
Right, so... Nope. Okay, now we're in business. So, I think what you might be referring to is the, the difference between what's required, what the current consent judgment allows and what they're being, what's being proposed. So, right now, if you look at page three, at the bottom of page three of your, your review, it says that the front yard setback requires 60 feet. They're proposing a 25-foot setback, and that is compliant. Now, what, actually, now that I'm saying that, can you refer, can you tell me what you were referring to in the letter? Maybe, let me just...
Well, it says on the, the items for consideration is the impact of the 45-foot waiver of the front yard setback when they're proposing 25 feet.
Yes, thank you, yeah. So, it's the corner lot, so it's the lot width, not the setback. And I think that's maybe where our confusion came in earlier.
Okay.
So, that was a mistake on our end. I apologize. So, the, the consideration for Planning Commission isn't about the setback, it's about the lot width. So, the lot width that's required under the current zoning is 75 feet. Under the consent judgment, it's, or what's being proposed is 60 feet. But on corner lots, you have to add an additional 25 feet. So, with the current zoning, they would be required to have 100-foot lot width for corner lots only. But the typical lots only show 60, and then the corner lots have some variation from that. So, even if you were to add that additional 25, they don't, they don't all still meet the 85. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to make it clear. Okay. Thank you.
All set. Thank you. Mr. Jaworski? Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, just back in early, early 2000s, the township really wanted large, large lots. And I think this is where the consent thing came in. Today, of course, demographics have changed and economics have changed, and the trend is definitely towards smaller lots. One question I do have, is there any plans to pave 25 Mile Road? Because that is a dirt road.
Obviously, as part of the site plan and engineering approval, whatever, I believe that's under the county road jurisdiction. So, whatever's required is, is what we'll have to do.
Okay. Nothing more. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
I don't have any questions.
And the Chair has just a couple of questions. The, the home plans that are on your, in your packet, are those the homes that are going to be going in there? As far as the size and style?
Similar, you know, obviously, it's, it's consumer-driven. You know, those are elevations and floor plans of houses that the owner developer has constructed before. But, you know, they're going to be in that 13 to 1,800 square foot range with the two-car, you know, front-facing attached garage. And so, depending on market demand, consumer preferences, they may deviate a little bit from the elevations, but generally consistent with what you see in the, in the package.
All right. And I'm noticing that there's a little bit of brick accents on these. Are you planning, whether it's this plan or a different one, having some brick integrated on the fronts?
Sure, sure. More marketable and, you know, aesthetically pleasing, for sure.
And, and I do agree, there's a shortage of all homes, all sizes. So, whether it's small, large, lots, you know, R1A, R1B, you know, there, there's a shortage all over the place. So, people have adjusted, I think, or they're adjusting to the cost of materials. I'm very familiar with the business, and they're not going back down. Couple of things went down, but once, once they hit those levels, that's it. That's the new normal. And, but there is, is a shortage, and I, I think you're going to be okay trying to sell these. I, I would have liked to have seen a 65-foot lot, even though that's only another five feet. I mean, in a, in a community where we have, in our subdivision, 50-foot lots, they're on the water. And to fit anything decent, I mean, these aren't mansions, to fit anything decent with the setbacks. Luckily, there's a three and a five-foot setback that's established for that, that sub. But it's tight, and even at 60, a little better, but you're dealing with a different setback there than we are. But that's what your request is, so that's just my, my comment.
60 is a good-sized lot. It still allows you to have 15 feet between houses and, and put up a nice product.
That's why I was asking about the plan, if they've been vetted to fit on those lots. It'll be these or something very similar.
Yeah, those are the houses that'll fit, for sure.
That's all I have. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I really, I like what you're proposing. I, I think it's really in concert with the master plan here in Chesterfield. I have one concern, and that is your proposed berm along 25 Mile Road. I moved here from Chesterfield, or from Clinton Township, very similar design on Canal Road 20 years ago. Canal Road was not traveled very much. Now, it's very busy. And your lots, 174 through 179 and that community clubhouse, with just a few trees, it's going to be so loud if that 25 Mile Road starts to gain some traffic. My suggestion to you would be build a big berm and fill it with trees. Nice, big, full trees. They eat up noise.
Right.
You'll have a hard time selling those lots.
Yeah.
If there's just one tree in a road.
No, no.
You know, a retirement community, they're not going to want to hear all that noise. And a startup family, they're not going to want their kids running around by traffic. So, can you describe this proposed berm for me?
Well, we just show it as, on this, this is a concept plan, so we're definitely going to berm it. And obviously, as the owner developer, and your concern is well-taken, and, you know, we've developed numerous projects before on, on busy roads. And, yeah, trees and berming work way better than walls do, you know, which a lot of communities require the walls, which I'm just, you know, I just can't...
You don't want individual homeowners putting up a wooden fence and a chain link fence.
Right, right.
It'd look terrible.
Yeah, whatever, so what the ordinance, or, you know, what we are able to do there with the site limitations, the frontage and all the considerations, you know, that are involved, we're going to put up, obviously, the nicest soundproof berm and, and tree screening that we can. You know, we have to make this a good product, a marketable product. Otherwise, we're, you know, we're putting a ton of money into the ground and we'll be sitting on vacant lots, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Carr? My first question is just in general, we're only here to approve the revisions to the consent judgment that we're comfortable moving forward, and then they'll come back for a site plan approval?
It's up to the Planning Commission tonight. So, you could, you could do, where you only make a recommendation to the Township Board based on amendments that are proposed to the consent judgment. That should be done, that's like your primary task. Secondarily, you could review the site plan and approve the site plan with the contingency that the Township Board approves the consent judgment changes that have been requested. But your primary role tonight is to, to make a recommendation to Township Board. And, you know, the applicant, if, let's just say, everything goes through, you know, the, your recommendation goes to Township Board, they approve that, the applicant would need to come back for final review anyway.
Okay. The reason why is because, so, let me just start with the positive feedback, right? I mean, I, I do like what you're trying to do. I don't have an issue with reducing the lot sizes. I do believe that, you know, from a marketability standpoint, we do need, you know, the more cost-effective homes, especially for the younger buyers. So, I, I like the approach. I, I like the ideas of leveraging the retaining ponds as areas for physical fitness and outdoor use. I think that's great use. I think utilizing the easement, a lot of people don't realize that you can utilize that easement for horizontal-type construction. And so, I think that's a great idea to do that. You only have one utility pole on your property. So, I think that's, you know, I think that's another good thing. The areas of concern that I have is from a site plan approval perspective, which that's why I don't know how we can approve the consent judgment if we don't agree. You know, I can't, you know, like, for instance, if you want to go from 157 to 179, I don't know how we can do that personally and say that's okay without some additional information. Number one, I think that it'd be good to see the buildable footprint on each one of these lots. I don't, you know, I see these, I see these rectangles, which is fine. But in particular with your corner lots, because you are reducing the minimum setbacks that we require, it's hard for me to really understand what is the buildable footprint of those lots, in particular around the corners. The, the second thing that I question is just the accuracy of your site plan. For instance, up there in the upper left, where those, it looks like condos are, there's actually like a, like utility, you know, I don't know. I don't know if it's like a consumer's thing or something, but there's like something there that I can't tell. It looks like it's where your green is, but that green looks like it's a park.
It's a green belt area.
Yeah, correct.
Separating from the condos.
Google Earth, do you see it? Yeah, there is, there's like, it looks like a consumer's... No, I mean, right now, if you look at it, it's...
I believe it's on the Camden, or it's not Camden.
But that's what I'm saying, I can't...
Concordia.
Concordia.
Yeah, the way they have it, though, shown is they have it right up against those, those buildings. And I, it doesn't look familiar to the, it doesn't look the way it looks in the real world. So, so, and the reason why I ask that question is, one, just trying to understand the, because, for instance, if this isn't, if the, if your spacing isn't shown correctly between where your house, like on Lot 39 is, and those condos, and they're taking into account that there's that ugly facility, to me, I'm going to want to see trees, barriers. I'm going to want to see something that's separating a commercial-type function and a residential-type function. And this does not show that to me because it doesn't accurately depict what's there. The second thing for a site plan approval, or the third thing, I guess you would say, is that serpentine going out of there. It's a very awkward traffic flow that I'm not quite sure how, I mean, cars can navigate it. But I mean, you know, for instance, plows and garbage trucks, things of that nature. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't quite know how that works, but that doesn't look right to me. So, I, those are my, those are my things. I don't know, can you pull up Google Earth by chance? Is that what you're trying to get, buddy?
You had a, you had a comment we didn't hear earlier.
That's what I was, that's what I see.
There's a sewer interceptor there.
Yeah, so... You know, but when you look, yeah, but when you look at your site plan, you show your site plan going all the way up to here, and this isn't taken into consideration. So, I...
Yeah, so, again, if I can just answer, you're going to see all that during the formal site plan approval process. You know, again, this was a concept plan to give you an idea of the layout we're proposing. You know, and the detention areas, the open space and all the amenities. When we come in with site plan approval, you're going to see all the detail. You're going to see the landscape detail, the berm detail, you know, the lot sizes. I believe the building footprint is shown on the conceptual plan, on the typical 60-foot lot with the setbacks, rear yard, side yard and front yard. You see a building envelope on there. See right there, the typical lot detail? See right there, the typical lot detail?
Is there? Am I missing it? I, I, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't, I don't see that, but again, I, I go back to what we're here for, like, if we first have to, again, what am I understanding is that from a consent judgment standpoint, they're asking us to reduce the lot size, which means we have to agree to that lot size now, and I, I, what I'm trying to say is I don't, how can I agree to go from one fifty-seven to one seventy-nine without fully understanding, again, the, the buildable areas and, and how it all relates together on, especially the reduced corner lots, it's, you know, so, yeah, it looks like they have an offset from the, from the, say, sidewalk or, say, curb, but it doesn't show the back easement and the side easements, and then what's that buildable footprint? Um, and then are we to assume that on those corner lots, that the front of the building, the front of the house is on the widest part? I mean, 'cause I would think it'd be on, like, you know, looking at Hanover Street, I would think that all those lots would be facing Hanover, but that's the narrow side, which I don't know how.
Can I, uh, interject for a second? I'm kinda thinking that we just address the consent judgment only, the site plan and the way everything is laid out. Leave that for another time, past this.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm trying to get at, is how, what are you going to approve then? Consent judgment-wise.
But if the, the lots don't work later on to satisfy the concerns you're bringing up, it's gonna change anyways, right? We're approving it, but it's gotta still work for the.
No, I agree, I'm just asking then, what's our motion gonna say to approve the consent judgment? What are we actually approving then? The fact that we're gonna let them revise it and then leave it up to them to tell us what they're gonna revise it to? I don't know, I'm asking, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I'm at it a hundred percent.
We have a recommendation to the Board of Trustees whether or not we think this consent judgment should be.
I think we just make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees whether or not this consent judgment after twenty-two years is still relevant. If we think it's something that we wanna stand behind, we're gonna say that. But if we think sixty-foot meets the, uh, the Township requirements and what we're looking for, we can say that as well. I agree with you, there's a lot of this sixty-foot that doesn't make sense to me either. But giving the applicant an opportunity to make it make sense is what we're trying to do right now. That's how I see it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I think what you would be, if you're just talking about the consent judgment, you would look at what the applicant has submitted as part of their request, and as he stated, just looking at the, the site plan as a concept plan, but looking at what they submitted in their letter, what they would be asking for would be thirteen seventy-five by one thirty lots along Twenty-Five Mile Road. Um, the rest would be the one sixty, I'm sorry, um.
It was a hundred and sixty-six.
A hundred and sixty-six would be sixty-five one twenty and thirteen seventy-five by one thirty. Um, the homes will range in approximate size from one thousand three hundred ninety square feet to just over eighteen hundred square feet with ranch, split level and colonial style. Um, front porch, rear yard, optional patio, two-car, front-facing attached garage, three bedrooms, two baths. All that stuff that's laid out in that, um, in the letter submitted by Mr. Callis dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Yeah, I, I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but I, that, would that be correct? Those are the?
Yes.
The things you're requesting to be included in the amendment of the consent judgment?
Yeah, so, again, we're just, we're seeking a recommendation to allow amendment of the consent judgment. That consent judgment, when amended, will contain the details, uh, from my September twenty twenty-four letter relative to, and, and what we did, in addition to that, we submitted that concept plan, so you as a board can see what this will look like laid out. Now, it may change. You know, we may lose some lots, we may have to, you know, change some other amenities. That's all gonna be determined during the site plan and engineering process. Now, obviously, we looked at it, you know, from a preliminary standpoint to see what can we do on this property with sixty by one twenties and the thirteen lots that are seventy-five by one thirty. And this is a layout, the best layout, that we came up with relative to utilizing the space, providing recreation area, open space, walking paths. So that's basically, we're here asking you, do you recommend that the Township Board allow us to proceed to do that? Now, you know, then we have to sit down and Mr. Seibert, myself, uh, Mr. Palin, your engineers, and actually amend the consent judgment to incorporate what we're proposing and what the Township Board approves. After that's all done, we still have to submit for formal site plan and engineering. So you're gonna have plenty of opportunity to look at everything, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to fit, we're able to, actually, that's how we came up with sixty-footers, we're gonna fit our product on that lot. And if there are some lots that it doesn't fit for whatever deficiencies exist or whatever, you know, that lot may be lost or it may be added on to another lot, but all that, it's, that's two, right now, we're not at that point, but that'll come. You'll have, we'll be in front of you again for site plan approval, so, you know, all your questions at that time, hopefully, will be taken care of. And, uh, and you'll have the comfort level, you know, that you need at that point to give us a site plan approval, so.
Mr. Palin, does this meet today's ordinance for density requirements as with what they're proposing compared to two thousand and two?
No, so, that, the consent judgment is for R one B lots, which is a seventy-five by one thirty.
Yes.
So, this density would exceed that. Um, it's, I would say generally consistent with the master plan designation. Uh, that's a, that's a range from, I believe it's, when I say it's two point seven to three point five units per acre is what the master plan designates this area, and I think the calculation comes out to about three point four units per acre, if I remember correctly. So, it is in that range, but as far as the zoning ordinance goes, no, it is a higher density than what the zoning ordinance.
So what we're here to, to agree on two thousand and two? On what's proposed on the lots? Or you might, or what are we?
What they're asking to do is there's a consent judgment on this property. They're asking the Township elected officials if they can change the consent judgment from a seventy-five-foot lot to a sixty-foot lot.
I understand that.
To this, to, to this.
Yes, okay.
And, and that, that's our task this evening, is to make a recommendation to the main board, to the elected officials, to continue on. Now, the elected officials may choose no, they may say no.
Okay.
It's, that's, you know, it's, it's completely up to their discretion. So this evening, all we're here to do is just to make a recommendation to the, to, to the main board with a preliminary site plan approval.
Conceptual.
A conceptual preliminary site planning approval, there's, um, nothing's written in stone at this point. They have to come again to us, and then we can discuss all of these things that you're, you're discussing.
That's kinda what I was getting at, it's.
It may as well didn't answer your question, so it's, it's as part of it also, as part of what's gonna transpire in the future, is this is gonna be considered a, a site condo complex, correct?
Correct, it's a psychondo development, so you'll have the master deed.
That, that changes the rules as well.
Yes, okay.
So, it sounds like we're gonna get another bite at the apple, so all we're doing is taking this first baby step here. And, uh, however it goes, and then whatever the elected officials decide, and then it'll come back and we can hash out everybody's concerns.
Perfect, okay.
And, uh, get everything right.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? I think with that, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. The motion for Camden, Camden Estates Site Plan twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five is currently zoned R one B, and it's also part of a consent judgment. Um, the partial ID is, is one five dash zero nine dash zero three dash three hundred dash zero zero five. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the main board, or by the main board, to amend the consent judgment that was, was cast back in two thousand and three. And also make the recommendation to, um, approve a preliminary site plan which is consistent with our master plan for this, um, this development.
And the Chair would like to, uh, support that motion. Any questions, comments?
Can, can, can we change the word preliminary to conceptual site plan? To me, that, that's different.
Sure, it could be preliminary slash conceptual, how's that?
That'll do.
Thank you.
Continued support. Um, with that, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See ya down the road sometime.
Yeah, we'll be seeing you. Thank you.
Um, so, do we have any reports or presentations or anything from Mr. Palin or Stephanie?
I don't have anything tonight. We do have an update, um, from Stephanie and her team on the fuel stations, but that's gonna be on a, a future agenda, so, nothing tonight.
Okay. Well, this is the next item on the agenda. We're going to do something to create a little more of a consistency with the board and, uh, appoint officers and, and vote them in, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, elect Carl Leonard as our chairperson for the, uh, the next term.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I didn't do that great, but, you know. Um, we need a, uh, I would like to make a motion to, uh, keep Rick LaBelle on as secretary liaison to the Planning Commission.
Support.
We wanna have discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, I would also like to, um, make a, um, a motion to appoint, uh, James Klonowski as vice chair.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's it? Thank you all.
Oh.
Um, we have, uh, Planning Commissioners' comments, if anybody has anything they'd like to bring up, Mr. Carr? Mr. Brokert?
All set.
Mrs. Fosberg? Mr. Heider? Mr. Klonowski?
I think you did very well tonight.
Mr. LaBelle?
Looking for volunteers for pre, pre-planning that, uh, for our next meeting, which I believe is March fourth? Is there, is anything on the agenda for March fourth?
Um, nothing definitive, but we do have some stuff that if they have plans available, we'll have a meeting, yep.
Okay. So, um, as far as, what I was doing when I was, uh, vice chair, is I always like to be a pre-planning uh, when I could, just to kinda, in case Paul wasn't at a meeting, and I would be just more involved with, uh, the review and the conversation, so, uh, if there's no objection to that, uh, I wouldn't, uh, mind seeing the vice chair, uh, come to these pre-planning meetings, uh, and if he chooses to do that, we'll still need one more volunteer. Nah. Ms. Sanders? What's that?
I just, I mean, I can only make pre-planning so often, so I'm not criticizing, but, I mean, to me, it should be, isn't it supposed to be just the chair plus two people?
No, you can have four.
So it's four people?
We can have a total of four.
Yeah, a total of four members.
So it would be me, Rick, and then two others. It would be the chair and then Eric. Those would be the four, the four of us.
But you're saying have three, have the three officers, no matter what, and then just one extra?
Well, that's the way, I always.
Which I'm saying, I don't think that, that's, I don't think that that's right, 'cause it's the same three people every time.
Whenever there was pre-planning, I was the first one to raise my hand.
Well, I just figured you were enthusiastic.
I'm sorry?
I just figured you were enthusiastic about it, but I just think that it should be.
Well, I had, you know, I got other things to do, but I thought it was important for me to be more involved with.
No, I understand, I just think that if there's two of the, if two officers are there no matter what, that only leaves two other positions, and to me, you should get different people in there.
I think, I think that we're gonna be taking a look at how that process works anyways, so, I think we can just move on with this one how it is for right now, and then we're gonna have a larger discussion between myself and Mr. Seibert on how those meetings operate anyways and the function of them, so.
Yeah, that's true, Mr..
Yeah, I mean, 'cause he can volunteer every week, and if there are two other people don't wanna do it, or one other, I mean, I don't see an issue, I'm just saying I, I don't think three-quarters of those should be the same people every two weeks, I think that you should.
I know historically, it was always three volunteers, and then at one point, it changed to,
Mm-hmm.
It was the chairperson that I believe, when Mr. Leonard and Mr. LaBelle switched, who was liaison for the ZBA, it kinda became the liaison was a standing member. I think that's what the, if I remember correctly, that's what the, I think that's why you became, being that you were secretary and standing member as liaison, I think that's why it changed. Does that sound right?
It does.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'd like to interject that, um, if for some reason you're not gonna be here, you could call Mr. Klono- or Mr. Klonowski and have him come again, have him come to the.
Yeah, I could do that.
So back to Mr. Wood, Mr. Carr said, I agree that I think it just should be open to two people.
No, and I, and I agree with that too, it's just that what we always did was always the same, and most people were tied up, like you said, you couldn't make it, there's others that can't make it, and so we always seemed to end up with the same group. I backed out if somebody else jumped in, but I just found myself always going to the meeting. Enthusiasm, yeah.
I would do the same. I mean, if some, if the two other members wanted to go, I would.
Yeah, I guess we can do that.
Not a problem.
Two people besides Rick and myself.
I, I, I.
Typically, what Mr. Wells says, every week he says, or every other week, Mr. Wells says, I need two people for pre-planning. Two people raise their hand, and if only one.
But two people hardly ever rose their hand, so I always found myself volunteering, which I enjoyed doing, and I thought it was important for me, but I don't have a problem leaving it the way it should be, and it's probably gonna change anyways, based on. Sure.
What does pre-planning do?
Well, we have Stephanie kinda go through the, uh, the petitions that are in front of us. There's sometimes a little discussion about it.
Is the applicant present?
No.
No.
Well, fire already gives you the thing of week in advance, it's a detailed, regular, now, what is, because when I come here sometimes and I see pre-planning on that agenda, when I came tonight, one of the individuals out there said, are we supposed to be in pre-planning? I said, well, if you are, I don't know where it is. These women know where it is either. So, is this open to the public?
It hasn't been. It hasn't been, Robert. I go to pre-planning when I have, when I think I'm gonna have questions about what I've read.
Why not ask them here? What's the purpose of it?
Clarity.
Well, you've got.
I mean, I, efficiency.
You've got the order, you have the.
Efficiency. I mean, these, these meetings could go on four hours, or they could be very efficient and be done in an hour or two.
Yeah, the pre-planning's only thirty minutes.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought the pre-planning.
You'd be surprised how, how.
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint, I just wanna make sure that no decisions are being made.
Correct.
That, and I know you're not a quorum, but, but it's posted on the agenda, it's pre-planned.
Right.
Six thirty.
But why is it on the agenda?
And that, and, and I was waiting for my turn to speak. At six thirty, I come out at six thirty. I'm prepared at the end, that's part of the reason that I go to the, that, that I appreciate going to the pre-planning meeting, 'cause it helps me to gather my thoughts prior to me going, me, I know. My thoughts are this long, I know Bob go, I knew you were gonna go there.
You've already read the planner's non-page report. What are you doing at pre-planning?
There's other things that we discuss, that, um, it, it, it just helps me to gather my thoughts. I come out at six thirty, and I have the pre-planning with the applicants. I'm sure you see me go out there and I, and I go to every one of the applicants and I discuss, you know, I, when, when, when there's a public hearing, I, I, I go through the procedure of how the public hearing works, so that they're aware of what goes on. And at times, I'm able to negotiate things before they come in front of us to, to alleviate, um, a hard discussion later on, you know. Please, please think about this, pardon me?
That's the purview of the planning commission.
And, and, but, but it gives them an opportunity to think about what they're gonna be asked when, when they get up there, so that they're not scrambling, going back and forth.
I know the other eight members of the commission are thinking, they may not have the same issue that you do.
And they have an opportunity at that time to, to.
They're not agreeing on anything, he's just putting something out there that might come up, and then everybody has their.
Let me flip this. Robert, I've gone to, I don't know, half a dozen or more. I'm not sure what the rules of engagement are during pre-planning. What should be happening?
I've never seen this procedure before, that's why I'm asking.
Ah, okay.
Been going to planning commission meetings for forty-five years, I've never seen this procedure before.
So if I.
I'm trying to figure out what it is you do.
We're following the rules and the proper protocol. I don't know that we are or aren't, but that's a great discussion.
Mr. Chairman, to, to try and clear up a little bit, I think what happened was, so prior to us working with Giffords Webster and a change in process, we used to do reviews of site plans, and the reviews would not come in till day of the meeting. So applicants would submit, they would come to the planning commission meeting for their first go-around, so the planning commission, the committee would get the reviews that day, the planner would go over the review comments, and then the secretary would meet with the applicants prior to the meeting and say, these are the reviews we got, here's the outstanding comments, be par- be prepared to address. and then the secretary would meet with the applicants prior to the meeting and say, these are the reviews we got, here's the outstanding comments, be par, be prepared to address them at the meeting tonight. So we changed our process internally of taking in site plans, doing reviews, finalizing plans, prior to them being forwarded to the planning commission. That process changed, but our pre-planning process never changed. And I think that's where the disconnect is, and what needs to be revamped.
Kind of a, a volunteer shouldn't be responsible to go then.
No.
Have he in Canada or Quorum?
No.
He can only have four, max four, from the board.
If you have the three, but one of us should go every other month.
Well, it doesn't even have to be the three, but like they were saying, Rick and I are gonna be there.
Yeah.
Then we need two volunteers and just let that play out. If only one person can make it, then it can always go to James if, you know.
Yeah, I would have, I would have no problem with just, you know, let somebody else go, I want, I want everyone to be involved as much as we can. Uh, just, just as a, just as a, um.
Because I always got that feeling.
But, but that would continue on, and to Bob's point, I mean.
No, and I understand that we, that's all, it all flushes out.
What I'm getting at is an inarticulate lawyerly blunt way is, you got nine people here that are looking at a site plan, special land use, rezoning request, whatever it is, you got seven, nine different perspectives you're coming at in front of. You have to send two people in to talk to them about it, then the applicant comes out, two people sit down with them. You're coming at it from the perspective of two individuals, you got seven other people that may have a completely different perspective.
What two people gotta come up? You mean out of the pre-planning meeting? The only one that goes and talks to him is Rick, and he'll bring up, nobody's making decisions. But the, but the petitioner, always, the applicant, always seems to appreciate his conversation with them to go back and forth. If, you know, if, if there's some concerns, they have a question, or it's, it kinda flushes it out so there's a better flow into the meeting, I mean, I've never seen anybody.
I'm not saying there's any, what I'm trying to figure out.
But we're gonna do it properly.
What the process is, and what is being accomplished at pre-planning? Because it's certainly not a public meeting.
Right.
I'm sure it's not.
No.
It, it, let, let, back, back in the early two thousands, we had agenda items that were running the alphabet. Twenty-five, you know, whatever, twenty-five, thirty items. We would have the applicants come in, we would discuss things, and when the meetings came up, they had a good understanding what, what, what the ordinances were, and, and, and the different, you know, things that gave the township concern. So we would discuss that, and then when the meeting came up, as Carl was saying, it helps the flow of the meeting. If we did not have pre-planning in early two thousand, we'd probably still be at some of the meetings. Seriously, it was that, you know.
And we don't ever.
And that was.
The applicant, and I was like, X, I'm like, X? Like eleven o'clock at night, I'm like.
Yeah, and that, and that, that helped the flow, as Carl was kinda alluding to, that helped the flow of the meeting.
Not when I was chairing it, but when the other guy was.
But I mean, it was, you know, it was, it was absolutely essential that we had that, had that pre-planning. It would take us a half a day to do pre-planning, because we'd have the applicants come in.
It just seemed like there was a benefit, and it was.
As long as you have a game plan when you go in, because it, it, it appears odd to me, that's all, it, it, it seems you don't, you have two people out of nine meeting with the applicant for only thirty minutes, and there's more, multiple applicants, right?
But we're not meeting with them in pre-planning.
Well, yeah, no, he does, no.
Well, he is after, before the meeting, if some things came up, it gave him, you know, some things to discuss with the applicant. And then they were prepared, a little bit ahead of time, and maybe it made it easier for them to decide what they wanted to do if there was some concerns. But we don't wanna do any.
Unless you're not violating the open meetings, and I have no decisions you can make, if you're not, and if this works for you, I'm gonna.
I don't think we are, and it's all, it's all volunteer time, we're not making decisions, but there's kind of an open discussion about, uh, what's on there, and then Rick kinda writes down questions that he might come up with, I don't know, sometimes we might come up with a question, and it just seemed to work, you know.
The planner is always in these meetings, in the pre-planning?
I'm sorry?
Stephanie is always in the pre-planning?
Or Jill, yeah, or both, sometimes.
Even though you have the full board report?
Yeah, you know, discussion sometimes, uh, is, is better than reading everything. It's just if you got both, you know, some people are more visual and, and, you know, with the audio and all that, and some people just read it and they, they nail it. You know, as an, as an attorney. As an attorney.
Can everyone please make sure they're using their mics?
I'm sorry?
Could everyone make sure you're using your mics, please?
As an attorney, you probably have a different way that you approach things, this just seemed kinda to work for us, and it was a flow, and we don't wanna do anything wrong, so.
Seriously, I've been to other meetings before where I've walked into, when I, other communities I've represented for insurance carriers, I'll walk in and they'll have pre-planning, but they'll have the whole planning commission there. And essentially, it's a, it's a pre-planning commission meeting before the planning commission meeting, and they'll be in there, and they'll, they'll just go over bullet points real quick.
We always thought that there was, you couldn't have more than the four people.
It's an open meeting, the public can walk in there and observe it, and people do, they have seats in there. So they'll go in and they'll observe it, and they'll just go over it, but, you know, oftentimes too, the applicant should have the planner's report in advance.
Is that, is that something that maybe we should consider, that if, uh, if the, uh, the applicant wants to come in on that?
Mister Chair, if, if I may, I, I think we ought to consider that, and the reason is, I don't go to pre-plan, pre-planning. The people who do have an advantage, they've learned some things that maybe I haven't learned. I read, read the, um, reports, if I have questions, I'll call Jonathan, because I don't understand stuff, but I, I know I would benefit from hearing from the rest of you who have, all come from a different, we, we all come from different perspectives, and I think it would be useful. Uh, and I'm thankful that we no longer have item A through X on our agendas, we've, we've taken care of some, um, other issues to make sure that that doesn't happen, and what we get are pretty well-planned out proposals that it's easy to make a decision and send them away, problem solving, with maybe only having to return once or twice, that's much better for the, for the businesses and the proposals. Um, I, whatever the consideration is, I would hope that, um, we do look at that more, how can we all benefit from the concept of pre-planning?
I always thought that there was the quorum, that we couldn't have more than four members from the planning commission. It wouldn't have to be all the members, but whoever wanted to show up, if we had five, seven, whoever showed up at it, that'd be okay.
Well, if you have a quorum, for sure you have to have a, for sure you have to have a public meeting, and even if it's less than a quorum, assuming they had, don't, can't make any decisions at all, and they're simply just sharing information, you don't have to hold it.
And that's kinda what it's always been, it's just sharing some information, we might hear something from Stephanie that her interpretation or what she did, you know, clarified something, or we have a question on their review, the Giffels review, so there's always.
Carl, I suppose if it's not busted, there's no sense fixing it, but it was, it was not clear to me exactly what this committee was doing.
And if there's anything that's not right, we definitely don't wanna go in advance.
I guarantee you'll hear from me. Well, if you had pre-planning meetings for what, the last twenty years? Fifteen years?
Uh, twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, so this is the first time this, this question has come up in twenty-five years?
And we've never really talked about it, so maybe it was good that we kinda flushed this out.
So if it's worked for twenty-five years.
It worked.
So Brian, you're invited at the next one.
I agree with, uh, Mister Bob, I say let's stop. At eight sixteen. I know, I mean, I know where he's coming from, but I, my only point was, you can have the two fixtures.
Keep the other two open to other board members, if two people don't volunteer, then Mister Klonowski can fill that third spot, that was my only point, just so that you get diversity of opinions in there. Personally, I, every time I've been to pre-planning, I, I think it, I was always taught at the beginning when I got on this board and there was pre-planning, uh, it was explained to me the same way, that you can't have a quorum, this is the only way that we can talk before the meeting with anyone else, because I, you know, we're not supposed to share, and I never do. But when I went to pre-planning, I would share my thoughts, and I would ask questions, and so to me, that, I, I, you know, when I can make it, I, I think that that's a good thing. I don't quite know why I would do a pre-planning for planning with the, with everybody and the public, because I, I'm all for efficiency, I would do it once, and that's the meeting, I don't think I need to do it in front of everybody, but that's just my thoughts, um, but, uh.
I think the big change is, you know.
But that's, you know, so I, I would say if Mister Bob's good with doing the, the pre-planning the way we have it, let's just leave it, and leave it to the tool.
And I think I just got so used to all the volunteering. If I was, if I was pushing my way in, I apologize if there was anybody else that wanted to do it.
No, in ten years, I'll volunteer more too if I'm still on the board, but right now I work, and I can only get there so often, and I appreciate you guys doing it, I, I'm just saying, when I went, I, I found a benefit to it. It's just, and I can't get there so often, so.
I'm looking for two volunteers for pre-planning.
I thought we had that. Did we have it? I thought Eric, and James Klonowski, but if Jim wants to, we can change it.
No, I mean.
We're good, all right, thank you.
I'm good.
It's six or six thirty?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, got it, okay.
So, with all of that, uh, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Support.